I don't know where he comes from, where he was at. I never did see him beside the road anywhere.
No.
There you go. He's nice.
You know what's weird is in the first...I got my pilot's license and when you're in the air, you can see Walmsider, Rawlins, Bear Royal, Hannah, Elk Mountain, Medicine Bow, Saratoga, and Camp. It's like small, but it's not small.
Yeah, it's maybe have small activity. You have to... Once you know you stick this up there, here's four men praying. It was a kid.
What was it?
He had four men in his house.
Who's that?
I don't know that year. I think he was dead before. The brother worked for him years ago. He was actually decent with brother. He was a pilot. He was basically a pilot.
I flew a...
Good for everybody, I think.
Oh, God, he was mother's cookie man. He used to fly us to Denver and then he'd go to sleep and I'd fly home. And then got my license later, but I'd wake him up timed to land.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Kind of act like you got it.
I didn't want to land. And the guy that used to run Boshop had one. And he would fly me to Denver when I was an expert witness in law court cases. There was a law firm down there that used to hire me.
That was back in Old Man Peak, Airway.
Can't remember the guy's name, but he was another one that would sleep all the way home.
Fifty minutes spare.
It's work.
I know. He told us. He said you were driving ninety.
Or like almost bags. So was it a lucky guess or was it real?
We faced no one blowing a hundred mile an hour.
It's really warm.
Huh?
It's warm. The whole city.
Warm.
You need to sign these very important charts, Chris. All right. We're gonna go ahead and start. Is that okay, Chris? All right, seven thirty has arrived. I'll call this meeting to order. Will you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Terry Wood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Daryl Gardner.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Wiesenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Jaclyn Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the December third, 2024 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the December third, 2024 city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Councilman Lumen?
Could we move on number six, board appointments, presentations? Could we move the DDA Main Street Board appointments to be the first one rather than the third?
Is there a reason?
Yes. So with having somebody applying for both, I just think, and that one having three, I think that one being decided would help with the other ones. Or we'd be able to talk to them before deciding those.
Does anybody have any heartburn with that? Okay, we can do that. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it came right back.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the minutes. Vice Mayor Sanger?
It's the whole consent agenda.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, December third, 2024, as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, December third, 2024, as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Just sign those. And I don't know to answer your question. The next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside by resolution number two C dash nineteen ninety-six, which sets a time limit for public comment of five minutes for anybody that would like to approach and talk to the council on anything that is not on the agenda. So if there's anybody here that would like to do that, please come forward, tell us your name, sign in, and tell us what you want to say. Going once, twice, okay. Looks like nobody wants to do that, so we will move on to the next item, which is under Board Appointments, six, under C, the DDA Main Street Board Appointments. And it looks like there are two openings, and I would entertain a motion for the first one. Councilman Lumen?
So, I move to have an introduction by the applicants to the Rawlins DDA Main Street Board for a term ending December thirty-first, 2028, and reserve nominations until after the introductions and discussions.
Is there a second?
No second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to entertain introductions for the appointment of the Rawlins DDA Main Street Board for terms ending December thirty-first, 2028. So will one of the applicants please come forward? There's Stephanie Kramer. Is she here?
Point of order. We need to vote on that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Terry.
You're right. Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any comment? Please open online voting. Thank you, Jaclyn.
We need to refresh. Yes.
Thank you. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. So we have two applicants for reappointment and one applicant for appointment. So I'm just gonna go in order and ask Stephanie Kramer, are you here? And if you are, can you please come up and tell us why you would like to be appointed to this board?
Okay. I'm Stephanie Kramer, and I've served on the DDA Board, and I've been a volunteer of the Org Committee since 2017. Throughout my time at the DDA, I've been a consistent volunteer and have witnessed firsthand the importance of enhancing a historic downtown in order to create an economic vitality. I am proud to be part of an organization that continuously strives at working towards a brighter and more prosperous future for our downtown.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Stephanie?
So...
Oh, go ahead.
I didn't say nothing.
Oh, but you did.
Uh-uh.
Okay. So have you...what's some of your favorite things that the DDA has done to promote business downtown?
Some of my favorite things would be the holidays, the holiday stuff that we do, the winter holiday. Downtown trick-or-treat is my favorite. Beautification. We did the sweet soray two years ago, and that was a blast. So much fun. And I also attended...this is kind of off-subject, but I did attend my first best practices in Alabama this last year, and that was awesome. So to get some ideas to bring down to our community and implement those. But I think that, you know, all the events that we put on, all the projects is huge. It's a huge part of, you know, the economic vitality for our downtown. I love everything we do.
Anything else? Thank you, Stephanie. All right, going down the list, Holly Hopkins.
Hi, I'm Holly Hopkins, and Stephanie was a lot more prepared than I am because I didn't know we were gonna be speaking. But I am a Rawlins resident now of eight years. I'm a small business owner and down here downtown and in the process of opening my second. I've been with the DDA for one year, and I'm drawing a blank. I think it's awesome and I see so much potential in Rawlins, and I think the DDA is vital in bringing that downtown and dealing with tourists almost on a daily basis. It is a huge draw. Any of the marketing and anything is...it's gonna be a good thing for Rawlins.
Are there any questions? Councilman Lumen?
So what's some of the favorite things you've done in the year that you've been on?
You know, I like everything that has to do with marketing because it's fun. I mean, like, I guess the psychology of it. I really like Summerfest and any of the kids' activities. The splash pad is awesome. And so I see potential in things like that, even if it's involving the business owners or, you know, coordinating with the DDA. There's just a lot of potential. I have kids, and having the activities during the summer when there's no school is huge.
Anything further? Thank you, Holly. And the next one is Christine Ford.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As someone who's been a proud member of Rawlins community for most of my life, I'm deeply passionate about contributing to the continued growth and vibrancy of our city. I'm seeking a seat on the Downtown Development Authority Main Street Committee, 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 because I believe in the potential of our downtown to be a hub of opportunity, creativity, and connection. I bring a unique perspective to this role. My analytical skills allow me to approach challenges strategically and identify solutions that are practical and forward-thinking. With the time that I've had with the Parks and Recs Committee, I've demonstrated my ability to collaborate, problem-solve, and advocate for initiatives to enhance our community. This experience has strengthened my understanding of how committees can effectively bring ideas to life in alignment with the city's goals. Additionally, I'm currently taking online grant-writing courses to further equip myself with the skills necessary to secure funding for projects that could benefit our downtown. I want to leverage every tool available to attract resources, foster business development, and create opportunities for Rawlins to grow and thrive. I am committed to preserving the rich heritage of Rawlins while fostering new opportunities for business development, tourism, and community engagement. I want to focus on strategies that bring people into our downtown area through vibrant events, improved accessibility, and initiatives that support small businesses. I respect the contributions of those who have served on this committee before, but I believe it's important to have the fresh perspectives and new energy. I bring strong dedication to listening to the needs of our community and translating those into the actionable plans that will ensure our downtown remains a source of pride for generations to come.
Councilman Lumen?
I noticed you're also on the docket for appointment for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. If you had to choose one, which one would you choose and why?
I think probably the DDA. I have small children, and I love the events. I love the marketing. I love what it brings to our members of the community. Also, I think that with the tourism aspect of it, I'm good when it comes to marketing. I'm good when it comes to social media. I know how to collaborate and bring people together. So I think that would be something I would probably succeed in. But also, I mean, the Parks and Recs, I love coaching. I love...I love all of it. Either one would be great, but I am interested in the DDA. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wells?
I move to appoint Stephanie Kramer. Sorry, Stephanie, I almost said your maiden name, to the Rawlins DDA Main Street Board for a term ending December thirty-first, 2028.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to appoint Stephanie Kramer to the Rawlins DDA Main Street Board for a term ending December thirty-first, 2028. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wiesenberg?
I move to appoint Holly Hopkins to the Rawlins DDA Main Street Board for a term ending December thirty-first, 2028.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Holly Hopkins to the Rawlins DDA Main Street Board for a term ending December thirty-first, 2028. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Please open online voting.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is Parks and Rec Advisory Committee Youth Appointment. Councilman Lumen?
I move to appoint Lucas Wells to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the ninth to twelfth grade alternate youth, term ending June thirtieth, 2025.
Second.
Before we vote, I would like to hear from Lucas. Can you come up and tell us why you would like to be on this committee?
Hello. I didn't write anything.
No one expected you to, just so you know.
So I volunteered for multiple things. I take some responsibility. I have a job. I look at the old Penn, and I volunteer there as well. And I would like to make...I would like to do it because of looking on the college application. And I just like the rec because I go there all the time, and I love basketball. So that's the reason why I would like to be on the board of the rec.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Wiesenberg?
I just got one question. Did your mom put you up to this?
No, she told me about it, and I said, okay, let's do it.
The grin on her face, it tells me something different, okay?
Not this time.
No, we know.
Well, I will tell you, I appreciate your participation and all the things that you do, and I hear your name a lot, and I want to thank you for all of that. So if...and nobody has anything else, that will be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Lucas Wells to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for the ninth through the twelfth grade alternate youth term ending June thirtieth, 2025. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with five yeas and one abstain. The one abstain was Councilmember Wells.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee Adult Members. And Councilman Wiesenberg?
I move to appoint Christine Ford to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, 2027.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Christine Ford to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, 2027. And Christine, if you want to speak again, you're welcome to. We do appreciate your participation, that's for sure. Any further discussion? Councilman Wiesenberg?
Christine, I just want to say thanks for, you know, applying and stuff. It's a very important role, no matter what. And as far as grants, you know, taking the course for grants and writing and stuff like that, it'll be helpful on this board also to maybe help the board and guide in a way to help funding for possibly helping coming in line better off with revenues and stuff. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Seeing none. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The last board appointment is the Urban Systems Committee Appointment. Councilman Wells?
I move to appoint Joshua Ford to the Urban Systems Committee for a term ending January thirty-first, 2028.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Joshua Ford to the Urban Systems Committee for a term ending January thirty-first, 2028. And Josh...Joshua, we're not gonna let you off easy, so you gotta come up and tell us why you would like to be on this committee, if you would, please.
That keeps it pretty simple. You guys signed me up already. Well, I'm Josh Ford. I've been here for thirty-one years, and I'm excited to be a part of it. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Seeing nothing. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, and a motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. And I do appreciate all the board members applying for these jobs. It's very important. If it wasn't for the volunteer boards, our community would be pretty sad, really. A lot of work gets done by you all, and I do appreciate it. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is reports, the DDA Main Street and Hub reports. I will turn this over to Vice Mayor Sanger.
Pam's not gonna be here this evening. She'll do her report on the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And you don't have one?
No. She usually does.
Well, I know, but, okay. Sorry.
That's okay. I found out four hours ago, so.
Okay. I'll let you off the hook. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is the City Manager Report and Staff Reports. And Tom, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Start off tonight, the City of Rawlins will be hosting the annual Christmas parade this year on Wednesday, December eighteenth at six p.m. We do have flyers that are out, as you will see. The route will start at West Pine and Third Street, heading down towards West Cedar Street, and heading then towards the Historic Depot, where Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there, and trees will be sort of the people that come. So you can put that on your calendar. On November twentieth, that has already occurred, the mayor, myself, and our Community Development Director, Luba Scott, attended the Wyoming Business Council and Carbon County Economic Development Insight Meeting. And what this meeting was about is the state of Wyoming has hired some economic development specialist consultants, and they selected Carbon County as one of the places that they would come to talk economic development and see what they could do to help. We had a very productive meeting on that, really good discussion on economic development, and there will be a follow-up meeting in the spring. I'm not sure when it will be yet, but...An update on the Lawrence property. A letter of intent to purchase was submitted to the current owner of the property, and he signed that, and the city signed that, so we do have an executed letter of intent on that of a purchase of that property. The last two things are just a couple other dates real quick, and I know it's early, but the City of Rawlins facilities will be closing on Christmas Eve, Tuesday, December twenty-fourth at noon. And then it will be closed all day Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, in observance of Christmas, with all the City Rawlins facilities opening on their regular hours, starting Thursday after Christmas. And then likewise, the City of Rawlins facilities will be closing Tuesday, December thirty-first at noon, and then all day Wednesday, January first, in observance of New Year's Day, with all the facilities reopening on Thursday, January seventh, their regular hours. That's all that I have tonight.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the City Attorney Report. Do you have any?
I do, thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. Short report. So also on the Lawrence property, the city has also been conducting its due diligence regarding any concerns that have been voiced about the condition of the property. The city did conduct a Phase One ESA. That has come back, for the most part, pretty good. The city will be conducting its due diligence and then have a Phase Two conducted. I've also reached out to the DEQ, obtained copies of any documentation regarding any concerns with property. There's nothing there. No spills reported. There is no history of remediation, tank leakage or anything. But to continue our due diligence to ascertain the status of this property, we are going to be conducting further testing. FEMA ordinance has been signed, and that is in effect now. We did meet the deadlines that we needed to with FEMA, so that is in effect. What will happen with that is it will... with that is it will, has been adopted by incorporation within our current building and zoning codes. So it's not going to go be added to our ordinances in the book, but it's by incorporation and by reference. Urban Systems did approve the new bylaws, and what those new bylaws, they changed a few things, updated some things. The next step is going to be, I will be bringing forward a repeal of the current ordinance that governs urban systems and placing it back under oversight of the Wyoming Department of Transportation. Are there any questions from Council or legal?
Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, the next thing on our agenda is direction from City Council to City Manager. Councilman Wells?
I just want to publicly thank our city staff for putting together the Christmas parade. We have traditionally not done the Christmas parade. It's been the Chamber of Commerce, and I think it's really cool that we stepped up when the Chamber couldn't do it anymore. And I know you guys pulled it together, like, really quickly, so I appreciate it.
I agree, and the pictures up front, I'll pay them room back. I will. I told them I have a large format printer, and I do know how to run Photoshop. Hang on to your hats. But anyway, it's nice to have, walk into City Hall and see some spirit going on, and it's awesome. Our, again, the only thing I have to say is, with the city crews, working as hard as they do, the water leaks, the streets, the, all the different things that they have to do, they do it with a few people, and it's something our, everybody in town should be glad we have them, pat them on the back. And Tom, please pass it on. We're super proud of you and them. So, thank you. Councilman Weisenberg?
I would like to second that Thanksgiving Day. I know for a fact they had to come out, right, from the one that called them for a leak, so...
So it's your fault.
No, it's so, very hardworking guy, right? They come out there young and very proactive and wanted to make sure everything was right, and the other crew, the rest of the crew come out, you know, so. Big thank you. Appreciate them and their hard work and dedication, so.
Yeah, without a doubt. Anything else? All right, let's move on to new business. I would entertain a motion for 9A. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve a 24-hour catering permit for the Rifleman Club Bar LLC, doing business as Rifleman Club Bar, liquor license number 59, to cater Town of Sinclair employees' Christmas party to be held at the Town's Recreation Center, 501 Lincoln Avenue, Sinclair, Wyoming, on Friday, December 6th, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve a 24-hour catering permit for the Rifleman Club Bar LLC, DBA Rifleman Club Bar, liquor license number 59, to cater the Town of Sinclair employees' Christmas party to be held at the Town's Recreation Center, 501 Lincoln Avenue, Sinclair, Wyoming, on Friday, December 6th, 2024. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yays.
All right, thank you. The next thing is new business, item B. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve Amendment 1 to the Cooperative Agreement Number 69047 between Wyoming Department of Transportation, YDOT, and the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, for project number B221008 for Rawlins Pedestrian Underpass located on Higley Boulevard, Rawlins, Wyoming, due to the inflation of project costs. Amendment 1 is a continuance on the State of Wyoming Attorney General's Office prior, signing prior to the City of Rawlins signing. This Amendment 1 will allow the project to move from the engineering phase to the construction phase in the summer of 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the Amendment 1 to the Cooperative Agreement Number 69047 between Wyoming Department of Transportation and the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, for project number B221008 for the Rawlins Pedestrian Underpass located on Higley Boulevard, Rawlins, Wyoming, due to the inflation of project costs. Amendment 1 is a continuance of the State of Wyoming Attorney General's Office signing prior to the City of Rawlins signing. This Amendment 1 will allow the project to move from the engineering phase to the construction phase in the summer of 2025. Is there any discussion? Councilman Lumen?
Now, I don't know if anybody on the council can answer, but with this underpass, I'm sure, I'm hoping they did studies as far as the water table goes, and the maintenance of that, and how much, did they predict the cost that would be to maintain it with our high water table?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Lumen, yes, that has been taken into account. The water table in that area is just about equal with where the original pathway would be, which caused concerns because of the water coming up. And so with the new design, if you will, there are drains, you know, that will be put into place. As the water surfaces, it will be siphoned off. So they have taken that into account with the new design.
New design?
Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
First, first off, Exhibit B, Exhibit B1, do you have that in front of us? And do you have Exhibit D and D1? Because that's what's going to be replaced, right? And the public really needs to see this and know this. And as Councilman Lumen has pointed out, the cost of maintenance is going to be increasing on this due to the fact of how they're going to have to pump the water or of such, or maintain a French drain, however they decide to put this in on the engineered side of it all. The other, the other problem I have, that I want to express a concern on, is the project's moved up from the total of, what, $1,326,027 to $2,832,686, which is a total increase of, what, $1,400,000 roughly, a little over maybe? We're responsible for the 10% of that, and that increases the amount to over $200,000 that we're going to be having to spend on it from the, almost $300,000. It'll be from $158,341 to $297,700. I understand the concerns of viability of this project, but at this point in time, that's $100,000 that we are going to have to make an amendment to a budget to put in there. And I believe my own self, right, that possibly this should be addressed at a budget session to make sure that everything's in there. So, but if we could see the exhibits exactly what's going to be replaced, I'd appreciate that.
Are those available at this time, Tom?
They're, Honorable Mayor and Council. So if you look under the original one, it's labeled "Original Higley Pedestrian Underpass Costs." Click on that. Okay, so if you scroll down, all the way down to the bottom, it says Exhibit B, okay? And that is Exhibit B. That was the original cost that City Manager Sarbi mentioned of $158, $158 and some change. And it just is labeled on the top, it says "original." So when the Public Works Director uploaded it, that's what he called it. So if you click on it there. Okay, so then Amendment B1 is the revised current one. It says that one, and if you scroll down to the bottom again, please, it says B, it said, keep going all the way down. It says right there, Exhibit B1 to the Cooperative Agreement, okay? They label their exhibits, B1A and things like that on the bottom. That's what YDOT does. We didn't do this. We didn't label them, okay?
So it's ultimately just the cost increases being replaced, is what the exhibit wanted? Okay.
Yep. So D is in the original document, which is the YDOT project, that one, the top one. And if you scroll down to near the end of the document, this is the original document that the council approved back in 2022. Keep going down. Nope, keep going. It's the sheet, that one right there. See, it says Exhibit D. And if you scroll that up just a little bit, it has the original project dollar amount in there. Now, the D1 is addition to Board Docs. If you get out of that and go back, and it says D1. That one, the only part that changed compared to the D that we just looked at was the new dollar amount of the project. And if you scroll down, could you go down a little bit more? It says D1 right down there. Do you see that? At the very bottom of the document. Right there.
No, 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 out of this, 10% of this.
Veto?
2.297 is out of that. Right? Is our responsibility the 10% out of the $2,800,000, or this $3 million? Because that increases to over $300,000.
Our 10%, it's going to be 9.51%, and it's out of the $2,820,168. So it comes out to be $297,700.
So along with Councilman Lumen's question of the maintenance cost, what is the projected maintenance? Who is going to be responsible for the maintenance of this at this point in time?
Let me answer that. I would assume it would be me, a city that would maintain this, you know, within the city limits.
But the road over the top would be YDOT.
That's federal. Yeah, because that's a federal highway. I think the Boulevard.
And it's my understanding that the drain system is a passive drain system. There's no pumps, electricity, that sort of thing?
Correct. Correct. So the only maintenance would be if there were concrete issues or those types of different...
Any kind of issues with the French drain type system that they put in happens with clogging and everything else. It'll go to the stormwater system ultimately, probably, right?
Correct.
Uh, Councilman?
So where's this water that's draining out there going, go to? Because it's going to have rainwater in there and everything else. Where would we run in that water, too?
I don't know.
Because we can't just, we can't just dump it anywhere, you know?
Yeah, because I know they wanted a French drain system as a surface, and that it would come around.
Yeah, it's got to go somewhere, though.
It would have to go.
Yeah.
Lou, do you have an answer for that, by chance? Do you have an answer to these questions? Like, where does the water from this French drain in the underpass, where does it, where does it go to?
Well, Honorable Mayor and Council, if it's, it'll be a drainage system, which probably follow the terrain of the ditch, which will lead to another culvert down the way. That's what I've seen in the past.
So it'll go to the storm sewer system?
Well, no storm sewer. It'll just follow the terrain of the natural ditch there, whichever way it's exiting out, and just follow that ditch line to the next culvert.
I see. Councilman Weisenberg?
Isn't the Enberg project scheduled to have stormwater drainage there? Is that in the budget or the engineering design of that?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weisenberg, yes.
So that would be a possibility of where the drainage would go?
That would be over a little bit, but yes.
So we can assume, sorry, so we can assume it's either going to go down the east side or the west side of Higley, because that's the natural flow now.
Correct.
That's where it's going. And then there's a crossover drain down by the Come and Go.
Yes.
And that's where that other, that other connection is, is one block over. It'd be connecting into there and running out through behind all those buildings, which is, which is already a drain.
Isn't this going to cause a lot more problems with Enberg and that, with more water draining that way? Groundwater in there? We got a problem with groundwater now. If we bring more groundwater from up there draining down into it, rainwater, I'm just, you know, looking at the future.
I can ask that question. I...
So, I mean, that's the problem with Enberg now, is it's pumping, it's got too much water there. Yeah, so if we end up draining water from there, more water down into there, we're going to be hurting us on the floor and helping us, but...
Tom, I just texted. You can call him. Do you want to talk to him right now?
Do you want to speak with the Public Works Director?
Well, one of two things. If, is there, is this going to be real destructive to this project if we consider tabling this to the next meeting?
Honorable Mayor, I know that there is some investment already made into the design, and I know that there are some costs incurred through the Urban Systems Fund. We would forfeit those funds. I mean, we would not forfeit those funds, but we would have to pay those costs, which I don't know the total of those yet compared to what our total outflow would be with this. But there are some costs, and that would be the only...
If we would decide not to do the project. But if we were to table it just to the next meeting to get better answers, would that, would that hurt things?
I don't think that would hurt things.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I'd move to make a motion, move to table the YDOT amendment until the next motion, or meeting.
Director.
Point of order, is it postponed or tabled?
Either. You just have to...
Either, if we postpone it, it automatically comes back up. If we table it, we have to take it off the table.
So which way, which way would you like tabled?
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to table this discussion until the next meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hall in favor?
Why, hold on one moment, please.
Oh, I mean, open online voting, I'm sorry. I knew you wouldn't have it typed out.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yays.
Okay, thank you.
No.
No, we tabled it.
We tabled it.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is new business, item C. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Wells, sorry.
I move to approve precision demolition requests for an increase in the tonnage rate they are charging the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, for hauling municipal solid waste, MSW, manure and tires from $35 a ton to $39 a ton to Casper, Wyoming.
Director.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve precision demolition requests for an increase in the tonnage rate they are charging the City of Rawlins... for a increase in the tonnage rate they are charging the City of Rawlins, Wyoming for hauling municipal solid waste, manure, and tires from $35 a ton to $39 a ton to Casper, Wyoming. Is there any discussion? Councilman Lumen?
So this is a 10% increase. That's higher than the cost of living. Why are they requesting a 10% increase?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Lumen, all that they stated in their letter that was attached is inflationary factors. That's what they basically quoted as the basis for this. Now, the inflation over the last two to three years has been much higher than 11%. The natural inflation, but that's basically what they are quoting in the letter that they.
Have we considered putting this out to bid and have somebody else do it?
The, we are under contract with them for two more years before this contract matures at that point. And so within the contract, there is a clause that they can propose an increase, you know, with explanations to be increased.
They can propose. It's not automatically accepted, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So how long have they been in this contract? When did this current contract start?
2017.
And in that time, have they asked for an increase from then to now?
Yes. I don't have the documentation for them, but there have been several modifications.
It's right there. It's in the blue folder right in front of his water. It's right there on her notes. It's right there.
The original contract, so the original contract was April of 2017, and it was for a term of three years. It expired 2020. However, there were some amendments that they elected, that the council and the parties elected to extend the term of the contract, including the increase in the rate. So the breakdown is the original rates were at $28.08 per tonne. Fuel costs, anything over $5 per gallon, and a $100 flat rate for backhaul from Casper to Rawlins. The First Amendment was conducted and entered on March 6, 2019, which was for the remaining term through the end of December 31, 2020, modifying the rate from the $28.08 a tonne. I don't know if it's always, is that correct? Or is that my fat finger? Anyway, up to $32 a tonne. And then it was amended again in September 22, 2020, so a year later, a year and a half later, just extending the term through the end of 2022. Then there was a third amended contract, June 15, 2022, through December 31, 2025, extending the term and increasing the rate to $35 a tonne. Also added higher haulings.
You know, I've kind of penciled this out. How many tons does that truck haul in one load? Do you know? Anybody?
Honorable Mayor and Council, it ranges on the moisture that's in the garbage. It's in the MSW building. So anywhere from 23 to, say, 25 on the heavy side.
So. Per mile, that's quite a little bit. You know, I'm just, you know, I don't, I don't know how to count loading and unloading because I don't know what they go through on the other end. I know what they go through on this end. But when you're talking about, let me get my calculator out here. And you're talking about $39 a tonne for 25 tonnes. That's $975 a load, and then they get $100 for backload. So that'd be 1,075. I don't know where that landfill in Casper is. Do you know how many miles it is from our landfill to that one?
I've never been to the one in Casper, Mayor.
Councilman Weisenberg, do you?
The landfill is closer to, like, the racetrack and stuff up there, I believe.
So probably 125 miles.
Say 130, 140, just on the plus side, on the high side.
That's $3.83 a mile. Both directions, counting both directions.
121 miles.
But when.
Councilman Wells?
They have to drive to Rawlins, too.
Right.
And then drive back. So it's really 242 miles.
But you're looking at $975. Plus the $100 to drive back, which is in the contract, divided by, what'd you say, 240? 240 miles is. I don't know. I did something wrong here. Yes.
So to answer the question about driving back, so that's called, considered deadhead miles is what they call that in the trucking industry. And most of the time when you're a trucking company, you don't get paid deadhead miles on certain things. But it sounds as if there's something in their contract now that they get $100 for that to help cover the cost, right? So in normal ways, most companies would not end up paying such a deadhead, or it's very minimal. And it's minimal on a leasing side, not a company own side most of the time.
Yeah, it's still about almost $4 a mile. Councilman Lumen?
I would like to know where he gets the, I've heard 11.9 to 30-some percent. The cost of living increase in 2023 is 8.7%. He increased it 10%. And the projected cost of living this year was 2.5%. And again, he's charging an additional 10%. So I'd like to know where he's getting those numbers to justify another 10% increase.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I'm not trying to sound rude or disrespectful to anyone in the business of this and trying to, I understand the cost of inflation, and it's hurt us all, you know, in a lot of ways in trying to come up with that stuff. But the simple fact is, it is written in the contract that they could ask for increase, and they've been given three different increases, I believe, at this point in time. I see this on there. They put it, the company has put in that we were, the prior company charged us $48. I feel that they're trying to, my thoughts is trying to increase to get up to that $48, right? And at that point in time, I look at it from a business aspect of things, and it's going to sound rude when I say this, but it is not the city's fault that their lawyers didn't come to the table properly with a good contract that automatically increased with cost of livings or of such, right? But if you look at the cost of living and the cost of fuel and stuff for diesels and stuff like that, it's actually decreasing at this point in time. And so when they're asking for this kind of stuff, I feel that it's in, my own personal feeling is it's in the best interest of the city at this point in time, not to honor this and to stay with the current rate. So at this point in time, I'll just flat tell you, my, how I'm going to vote is no. I don't believe that this company is, should have, and that they should have done more due diligence and come in a better contract. And when their contract comes due in two years, maybe they'll have a better opportunity at that point in time.
The contract's good for another two years, and it says we may pay more or not, or whatever they may approach. I will tell you, diesel is going down compared to going up. And that is, because they were talking about in the letter, $5 a gallon for diesel and such like that. Well, it's way, it's not, it's way down from there. And I think where we've budgeted for this, I'm more in line with Councilman Weisenberg's thoughts, to be honest with you, that it still comes out to $4 a mile, both directions, actually. So that's pretty good for a semi. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Sanger?
What a wonderful thing the internet is. So a typical collection truck costs around $2.27 a mile to operate.
That's a collection truck, but what about a semi?
It doesn't define it as that. It defines it as that's its transportation rate, and it notoriously gets bad gas, but.
Yeah. Well, and I've hired semis before, and of course, it's beaten away in the past. But, you know, tires, yeah, they're up. Gas, fuel, they're down. Tires have leveled off.
Employees.
Employee costs could be going up, but your other costs are coming down at the same time. It's kind of balancing itself out across the board. You're losing, you're losing on one side, which is your employee, and you're gaining on the other side, which is fuel. They're asking for an $11 increase in seven years. That's what they're asking.
Well, during the COVID and all that, it was everything went nuts. So it's a little different then, but now it ain't.
Well, the other thing about the letter, which is interesting to me, is it's hard to pinpoint the cost of living adjustment in percentages when I have heard.
Yes, exactly.
11.9 to 30-some percent. Well, you can find the actual answer. It's not a difficult thing to find the actual answer. You can't hear and say it's this. You want to bill us 11.9%.
Well.
And, Kate, right, I heard that. I heard 4%.
The other thing about this letter that bothers me is that the previous company was charging $48 a tonne. Well, that's why you put it out to bid. They bid, they got the bid. That's, it's a contract.
Yep.
So.
And they can ask. And they did.
And they did. All right. So is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The, excuse me, the motion fails. It was two yays, Councilmember Lumen and Councilmember Seelaw. The nays were.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went wrong. I was supposed to vote against it. I'm sorry. I wanted nay.
Okay. So that's your call, Mayor, if you want me to reopen because they want to change their mind. It did fail.
If it was an honest mistake, I think we should move it to nay.
Both of, both?
Well, both of you?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think it'll matter because the results are the same, but I want it to be.
The ratings get associated with yays or nays, so it's called. Okay, so the motion fails with six nays.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is an executive session, and I will, Councilman Wells?
I move to enter into executive session at 8:32 PM per Wyoming statute 164405 to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law to consider the selection of a site or purchase of real estate when the publicity regarding the consideration would cause a likelihood of an increase in the price.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at 8:32 PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yays.
All right, thank you.
Is either one of them going in? Just need to make up.
Me, too.
I wish I would have not learned about the national tour. Yeah, now. Just fix this.
I wasn't sure if that would matter. I wasn't sure before we came in, or he has to be for the vote.
I'm not sure. I am not sure.
I'm not sure. I am not sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will.
I've researched and had everybody know. It's a nuanced point.
Yeah.
Were they? I didn't think we ordered.
What is it saying about?
Um, Chris was cleaning out some stuff and he found a finished door.
Oh, okay. So they're open.
They're all the ones.
Everybody too. Oh, I see. So. Yeah. Awards thing. Did they? That's real good. That age, especially before they did the three point five before, before, uh, the awards. And that, and that's long before that too. And, uh, three point, three point five. They got something. So, yeah, that's cool. Cause that's all. Um, I'll get. I was watching. Just listening to some struck and cross, but I started talking about the last conversation that I catch on Friday before. It was good. There were some questions that, you know, when we're in urban systems talking, I don't think that far ahead, but they were asking about where the drainage would, the drainage, like in a rainstorm where there's more coming. Where's, where's he gonna dump out? And if there is like a system there.
Oh, wait. You know, over by the, um, higher pitch, they got that big pit right there.
There is a big pit there, but that's gonna, that's a built for, yeah, that's gonna be, we're downhill. So what we were thinking and I kind of envisioned that it would run like down to like the old Cummingville where it could enter and then drain. Drain out to.
What are they talking about?
No, well, I thought that what we had talked about with Jake Long was that, um, is that they would have a drainage system in there so that it would drain as a catch. Because where they wanted the pathway, as I recall, was right at the water table. And if they put it in, the ice and everything, but they were gonna, gonna try to capture it before and get a drainage system moving, but then I wasn't sure from that discussion where it would eventually go, but it makes sense. It would go down the ditch to that last one and then go out, which then Bruce asked with that interference with the water, the drainage aren't there. But it seems to me like it wouldn't be far enough, you know, over that it would be like to shut over and it wouldn't affect evenness.
It wouldn't be much different though.
But I, so. I'm gonna look at this completely. There's a bunch of drainage plant there. Is that, that's the one for that water table wave? Basically dry out where it would lift it to, you know what I mean? I don't know how that's.
Well, but. Wait, well, you could even have any influx. It would handle it a lot better.
If it had an influx, it would. But I don't think the, the storm bank was that big, was it? That they were gonna put in, because they were talking in that maybe first discussion. And then we could get that so that it.
Um, so.
But I, I was blank.
In general, remember, you want to participate in debate.
No, I just. I know when you get down to the Cummingville. Because the. It's gonna go down and hit that and then go out. Into the pool, yes.
Once the motion to enter, if the session happens, those present are authorized, it's the upset members can't block the decision that the majority wants to arise as the vote itself does not restrict attendance. After the fact, of course, the motion is suitably limited in participation.
Yeah. And that's gonna tie into trigger current. Or. It will for the. I don't know.
So you could.
How it gets. Like if I'm over to that, it just won't wait.
Probably is wait.
Yeah. So I, I do. I don't know.
Yeah, no, no.
What's it, it's all done, you know?
Yeah, again. Unless there was had been, oh, like, I have rules prohibited, uh, that the, that the board makes, or that the, the motion to go into it precludes the attendance of any upset members. But since it was. Yeah. Did you end of the meeting?
Did we get the warning? Did we get anything else?
Um, I met with, with a pastor. Urban systems, they came in with COVID. The only thing they really had was the cost.
Right.
Of what it was and the impact.
And this can approve, well, then allow them to send off that, uh, the, the, so this technically it was just waiting on us.
That's very cool. And they, yeah.
Void appointments, got the, they're gonna be done.
One of the, 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 the comments were.
Okay. And then, uh, urban systems, he would have got on, because I think he was on the one, right? That was, he was Jackie's. Oh, she did part, so, right?
She was on that one as well.
Oh, okay. She got one. Awesome. And was it any?
Those are hard.
Those are hard. Yeah. Was good. Glad we have the numbers turning on.
Yeah, that's always good to see.
Yeah, I think it was good. It's good. So last year, um, with the soccer team, and when they started the season, I can't remember if the GPA was bad, but when they ended the season, I think it broke, I think they were, um, I think majority were through three point four. Yeah. Yeah, it was, it's cool seeing, it's good to see the football team because, you know, usually this, sometimes it's pretty low. They were, yeah, and I, some guys, they called up for the three point five. That was awesome.
That is so cool, because, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah. Yeah. Cool, because. Yeah. Close up, I was Brad Matt three oh.
I was close for that.
On my, on my last year, definitely. That's it. Yeah. Well. Well, I'll come by this week if you want and, uh, get that paperwork. Okay. Jeff. All right. Well, travel safe.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Yeah, no worries. Sounds, sounds we meet the other deadline.
It's fifteen hours, it's a two hour.
You're going.
It's thirty hours.
Are you going through, um, Flagstaff?
I'm.
And then, so on your way back, will you go through? If, if you do, um, have you ever been to Sedona?
No, I, I follow.
Well, if you, if you can come back up through, um, Jowa to Flagstaff, but on your way up at, uh, uh, Sedona, I bet the sun here is beautiful. And that is one of the coolest, uh, drives I've been out ever taken. It was beautiful. Yeah. And Flagstaff was cool because Sedona's down, they can wind the canyon down to the bottom. So the temperature changes, the trees and everything. The timing here was perfect for, when we got up to Flagstaff, it was like, yeah, the elevations were high and they had snow on the ground, so you go. Yeah. You go from this like sixty, seventy degree weather to, you can turn it up into.
The weather temperature changes.
Yeah. It's neat though. It's beautiful.
I'm gonna do that.
Yeah. And then I can't remember where it took me, but you end up going, you know, Grand Canyon's very close, but you end up skirting, like I think there's, uh, oh, you, you go up by, um, uh, Monah, through that area.
Oh, okay.
It's loud school because if you get a seat, you see some arches across.
The maps, it, it does cut right across.
Yeah. Yeah. So that was really neat, because I think that takes you up to, can't remember where it takes out, or so it takes out by rifle, Craig, somewhere in that.
Oh, okay.
And then you just come on through that back.
Well, that's, that's the one way. Takes you down to Bag, to Craig. And it takes you down that way, which, you can say it's faster than it is.
Yeah. Go that route, you just go around the Rockies.
Looks like you break down the.
Yeah. Oh, I definitely. Oh, you'd have to run, yeah, you would. But you probably didn't have that much time to trip the, you, you might save time enough to go to Larnell.
Yeah.
If you don't want the, you know, the other.
Our cars are a hundred thousand dollars, that's just thirty hours on it.
Yeah, that's why, that's why.
About thirty-five hours span.
Yeah.
For all the trouble.
Yeah. How long do you think you're down there?
Uh, just.
Oh, really? Yeah.
I should have.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. Well, hopefully when you get there, everything's good and, yeah, good return.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Getting back home.
Maybe that's where, that's where.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something else.
Just.
You got eighteen years left. It's gonna be okay. I'm already asked like, excuse us, sophomore, and I'm like, I can't do this, I have seventeen years.
You can hear on the phone. I don't know why I have my question.
Well, this is, you know, pretty sweet. Yeah. Just need to get a bomb. Does it matter? She was. Yeah. Yeah. Well, and that's the hard part right now, you know, working that, staying low is, um, we were at the banquet tonight and usually she isn't like people at all or like if she's in the room, she just shout, she cowers down because it was super quiet the whole time. And so I was letting her on my phone, I have a pen, but she can draw, she loves to draw, so she's drawing. And then she's just slapping the pen against the phone. I'm like, okay, how do I keep it quiet? It's just, this is weird. Yeah. So, on the ground. And she was good on the ground, she's walking. I had a key, I'm like, I was like, oh, she can play with the key. That's a bad idea. I give her the key, she sees a hole in the metal leg on the table and she slams the key into it. Right. And it's making all this noise in it. So now I try to take the key and she's like, I'll find you. Yeah. Like, get on, like, oh. She's funny. Oh, really?
It's hot. I don't know. It was on.
They, I think they stay on there for like, like a minute, I think. Yeah. Yeah.
For the entry. Looks like I, I don't know.
Okay. I did, yeah, cause I, cause we were on a video call and, you know, so Mari was talking to her mom and, uh, I got off the phone and said I had a missed call, I was like, you know, must say, I should have called and I clicked it and it said your name and I was like, oh, man, I missed a call. So I said, I'll just text him just in case. And then.
Oh, it was like. It was just the weirdest thing. Cause I picked my phone up. So I was gonna call you back. Well, this is.
Yeah, I thought it was, it was weird that it was the same app too that I was using to talk. No.
Then I got the phone, I thought, well, maybe he was on there, so I.
No.
Maybe he answered.
Oh, no. Yeah, I seen that night. I thought, I thought, oh, no, sign off, my kid, my video called you. Cause you were the last conversation before I talked to him. Oh, no, I hope you didn't.
It's me.
That's funny.
It was me.
Usually it's my kids. Yeah, you, or it would have been funny if she would have answered, because she's quite on clicking things.
Oh, yeah, that was.
But had she get on there and start. Yeah. She's talking, give her the phone. She does a stand, she'll pick up anything, it doesn't matter what it is. She's.
My face? About what? Oh, yeah.
The trees or the front?
I was like seventy pounds heavier than that picture, but, you know, it's fine.
I'm probably there now. That's the way it feels. Oh, man.
I just wanna see if I can make it down steps again, didn't I? I can go around this area.
Oh, I didn't find you.
He's not even around.
Oh, that's why it's being.
He said it was, um, underneath.
It's like it's on.
No, I think.
So you all tied up together? Came in, right? At the right time, didn't you?
Yeah.
Everything's done?
Yeah.
Time for me to shut up. How was the awards?
It was good. I was just telling Tom that they had a lot of, uh, awards for the three point five, the four point one. I think your boys.
Lucas?
Swear to, maybe for one of those, just, they had the three point oh and the three point four.
Yeah, I think it would depend on the day they pulled the.
Well, I knew it had something, so.
My kid said, I'm passing, that's good. I said, A's and Bs, but A's and Bs, that's.
Science is.
And then, then he kept telling me, well, you didn't get A's and Bs, it's not about what I did. A time ago, A's and Bs.
Well, my kids are always like, you got straight A's.
It's a different time, A's and Bs.
I didn't get straight A's in college, I'll tell you that.
You know what's crazy about, they say a lot of people like, I never went to college, but a lot of people like don't, they struggle in high school, go to college and. they struggle in high school, go to college and do really well.
I mean, I didn't...
Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't... You're not striving for a GPA like this much because you're not trying to get into something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here it is.
You're like, oh, I'm good. Pharmacology? I'll take that B.
Yeah.
And it's not like an employee. Oh, you're great.
Yeah. Pharmacology is...
They just go, oh, you know, what's your degree is what they ask. They don't ask for your grade.
Chemistry of medicine.
Councilman Eisenberg?
I move to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at eight fifty-seven PM.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at eight fifty-seven PM. Any discussion? I'm out of breath. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Yay. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yays.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is item C. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of November nineteenth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting as amended.
Second. Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of November nineteenth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Yay. Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yays.
All right. Is there any objections for matters discussed in executive session? Seeing none. Anything to come before this board? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Thank you all.
I'll just... Oh, gosh. I'll take everyone out. Oh gee, what do I need to do?
There is moments of old, huh?
Ben Ross?
We've had some pretty good successes though.
I think so.
Our skate park.
I think our town's better now than those four years ago. We've quite a bit done. We've got the water system. Not secured, but better.
Lots of home daycare. Maverick.
Maverick.
The gambling.
Starbucks.
Gambling. Yeah. Lots. Gambling. Gambling.
The gambling.
That sounds like the gambling. Maybe I should go to the gambling.
Do ask Garrett for me.
I do.